Thanks, everyone.
So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And this is the first time set aside for a public comment on items on the agenda. Is there anyone here wishing to participate in the public comment period? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Ms. Maynard?
Thank you, Chairwoman. The next item is to approve the agenda. Staff recommends a change to the order of a few items. We ask for the board to hear items thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four, which are all related to fiscal year 2023 budget immediately following this item. And then we'll resume with the posted order of items. Otherwise, your agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
Any comments from the board before we take that motion? We'll go ahead and do a motion then.
Motion to approve the agenda. What's okay?
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Rowan, aye.
Anyone opposed?
I give the aye.
Okay. Anyone opposed? Nay. And that motion carries.
Thanks, Chairman. And so our CFO, Mark Trussell, will present to you. Item thirty-two will be the presentation of the budget itself. Item thirty-three will be to conduct a public comment period on the tentative budget. And then item thirty-four will be to adopt the budget. So I'll turn it over now to Mark Trussell.
And we'll take it as one item? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, MJ. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. We'll start this budget presentation with our funding sources. You can see here that our largest funding source is our sales tax. We're budgeting that at two-hundred-and-ninety-one million for next year. That's a half a percent in sales tax. Our fuel tax is at two-hundred-and-three-point-five million, and then grants at one-hundred-and-forty-two million. Our fair revenue from transit at fifty-six-point-seven. And then we did issue a bond this month of two-hundred-million dollars, and we anticipate using about one-hundred-and-thirty-two million of that money next year. So our total revenue budgeted for next year is eight-hundred-and-forty-one million dollars. And this is just a graph of our sales tax for what we're projecting in twenty-two and twenty-three. Again, two-hundred-and-ninety-one million dollars in sales tax. That's half a percent of sales tax. And then if we move to transit and those funding sources, you can see here that we're budgeting four-hundred-and-twenty-two million dollars in fiscal twenty-three. And again, more than half of our funding for the transit system is sales tax at two-hundred-and-eighteen-point-six million dollars. Move to fuel tax revenue. And this includes our motor vehicle fuel tax of nine cents plus all of the FRI fuel tax. You can see here that we're budgeting two-hundred-and-three-point-five million next year in twenty-three. Just as a side note, for July one of twenty-two, the fuel tax will increase by one-point-six cents per gallon for gasoline. And then our fair revenue for, you can see our chart here and the dip for the pandemic. And then we see that recovering some in twenty-two, and we're projecting that recovery to continue in twenty-three. We're budgeting fifty-five-point-four million in fair revenue. And then our funding uses, our total funding uses, eight-hundred-and-forty-one-point-four million. The majority of that is capital outlay at four-hundred-and-twenty-nine million or fifty-one percent. Then contracted services at two-hundred-and-seventy-point-three million. And that is mostly the transit system contracted services there. Then we have ninety-one-point-one million for debt service. And then salaries and benefits make up about six percent of our budget. And we go to capital outlay for the entire agency. You can see roadways is the majority at three-hundred-and-ten million, and our transit system at one-hundred-and-seventeen-point-five million. Our total capital budget for next year is four-hundred-and-twenty-nine million. The transit system, we're budgeting one-hundred-and-seventeen-point-five million. Out of that, ninety-point-two million, or about seventy-seven percent of that budget, is grant-funded. Then our transit funding uses, you can see here, we're budgeting three-hundred-and-ninety-two-point-two million dollars. And again, most of that is contracted services at almost two-hundred-and-forty million. Capital outlay, again, at one-hundred-and-seventeen-point-five. And then salaries and benefits, again, almost six percent of our budget for transit is salaries and benefits. And that is my budget presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the Commission? I do have a question about the contracted services at two-hundred-and-seventy million. Does that include the three contracts? That's the paratransit as well as the two transit contracts?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Well, this is a public comment item, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the budget for the Regional Transportation Commission? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period. And then the next item would be the action. Can we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the budget.
That is item thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Item thirty-four.
Motion to approve the budget, item thirty-four.
Can we have a vote on that? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Rowan, aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. And that motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Chairman. Thank you, Board. The next item on your agenda is to receive the CEO report. To kick off the CEO report, let's start with some exciting news. Our MPO planning team is the recent recipient of the American Planning Association's Quality of Life Award for their work on the Southern Nevada Extreme Heat Vulnerability Analysis. And just as an FYI, this really is a big deal. It's a national award. The award honors a plan, project, or initiative focused on improving the health and well-being of a community. The Extreme Heat Vulnerability Analysis highlights extreme heat's negative health and quality-of-life impacts on our community, identifies areas across the valley with populations most vulnerable to heat, and includes strategies and best practices for mitigating future impacts. So we'll present the team's great work to you next month during the June board meeting. But we are excited to recognize Andrew Kelman. He's our MPO Director. Paul Gully, RTC's Senior Regional Planner, and Grant Schertz, our Transportation Planner for this honor. And I don't know if they're here. Yes. There we go. Please stand.
I'd just like to share that I was at the APA Conference in San Diego, and people were talking about this report, that they were wanting to adopt it in other communities. They felt that it was really a significant piece of work. And so congratulations to you.
Great job. And I'll, you know, point out that that is a collaborative process with your staff. So we appreciate all the jurisdictions help on that. Next, I'd like to provide you with an update on our cycling initiatives. May's National Bike Month, and the RTC is celebrating with many events and opportunities for our community to participate. We kicked off the celebration with Congresswoman Deidre Tynus, where she announced that we'll be expanding our popular bike share system, followed by a free bike helmet giveaway at First Friday and a group ride in downtown Las Vegas. During the rest of the month, we invite the public to join us at two-bike safety and maintenance events and the new bike share station that's going to be opening at MLK Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard de Nalto Drive. So those who are interested in learning more can find the information on our website. And then finally, I'd like to share an update on the design of the Maryland Parkway Bus Rapid Transit Project. With fifty new transit stations as part of this project, we are seeking public input on the overall design of the corridor as well as two-station options. A short survey is available at marylandparkway.com, where our community can provide feedback on various aspects of the design, including lighting, shade, seating options, comfort, safety, and security. So obviously, we really want to hear from the community as we redesign this vital corridor. You know, it connects so many connections, right? To, in that area, ninety thousand folks call it home, eighty thousand jobs in that corridor. So we really want to hear from the public. The survey will remain open through the end of this month. Sorry, end of June. End of June.
Thank you.
And that concludes your CEO report.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the Director's Report? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the NDOT Director's Report.
It's been so long. I forgot how to turn on my mic. Good morning. It's good to be here. All right, let's get started. And as I do every month, we're starting with safety. And I'll stay, I'm just kind of opening, statewide, we're better, and we're far better than we were this time last year through April last year. That, however, is not true in Clark County. Clark County is through April, just so, just through the end of April, twenty-four percent higher than last year. So the statewide gains we're seeing are even better on a statewide basis, right? If you exclude Clark County. Fortunately, motorcyclist fatalities in Clark County is, are lower than last year. It's seven percent lower. Unfortunately, that's not true for pedestrian fatalities, which are thirty-five percent higher, and bicyclist fatalities, which have doubled through April. It's Bike Month, but, you know, bikes are on the road every month, every day. And so we need to be thinking about that. At NDOT, we, you know, we focus, safety is our number-one priority. And as we've been talking about for several years now, impairment and speeding are the two leading contributors to the fatalities that we're seeing on the roads today. So one of the things we're doing is working as, developing our Speed Management Action Plan. And so we're doing that at a statewide level, but we're hoping that it will be a model that we can work with the local agencies on to really implement speed, data-driven speed strategies to really reduce the speeding that we're seeing on the network. Our plan will be looking at speed overall's impact on fatal and serious injury crashes in Nevada. And it will identify strategies and actions to assist in planning for speed management. And while most of the crash data, when we're talking about crashes, most of those, we're really, we are really talking about speeding on the network. But I should just note that speed, underlying speed, is a challenge as well. When our roadways are designed with forty-five mile-an-hour speed limits, the probability of a fatality for a non-vehicular person, so a bike or a ped, is much higher at forty-five miles an hour than it is at twenty-five miles an hour. So if we really do want to combat overall fatalities on our network, we may need to look at some of the underlying design speeds for our basic arterials in our corridors. Just something to think about. I know that where success has been found in really getting two-zero fatalities across the world, it has been because they've had the hard conversations about what the actual design speed should be on their roads. Not sure that we want to have that conversation yet. First, we can start by targeting speeding, though, and really making sure that we're being smart about that. And one thing I like to talk about is frequently, we get asked to look at the speed, the posted speed on a corridor. And we go out there, because people are like, everyone's speeding. You should look at the posted speed. So we go out there, and we look at posted speed. And historically, the answer would be, you're right, they are speeding. So let's raise the speed limit. Today, I say, what do we need to do? Because we set that speed limit for a reason. We set it at forty-five, or thirty-five, or fifty-five for a reason. If people are traveling at a rate higher than that, then we didn't design the road to get the outcome we want. So what do we need to do to fix the road? Or has the context changed such that maybe that speed limit is no longer applicable? But we shouldn't be setting the speed limit based on the speed that the people are driving. That's completely backwards. So that is going to be part of our strategy, is really looking at that. And that's going to be a change that we are implementing at NDOT and have been already. All right. Bike Month and also Motorcycle Awareness Month. You know, they think in the rest of the nation that, like, you can't do it year-round. It's good that we're focusing on it here as well. But we know in Nevada, particularly in Southern Nevada, that people are out on their bikes, motorized or otherwise, year-round. So we're proud to help support some of the biking and walking events. Our Safe Route to School partners have been doing activities encouraging biking, safe biking and walking to school. And it's also Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Fourteen motorcyclists have died through April in Clark County. That, like I said, that's a thirty-five percent decrease from last year, but still fourteen motorcyclists. And, you know, I remember, I remember when I was new to Vegas. I had a friend of mine who had recently moved to Vegas, and we were driving somewhere. Well, I was driving, he was riding his motorcycle. And I went to look for him, because I knew he was nearby, and I didn't even see him. The motorcyclists, sometimes they can just disappear behind that blind spot. And so it's really important to look not just once, but twice, and be extra aware of where those motorcyclists are. You know, and sometimes they catch you, they don't even know. They come up on, so just be very aware. They can really hide, and they're trying not to. But, and we can miss them even when we're trying to find them. So, and as motorcyclists, make sure you're wearing your DOT-approved helmet. Don't speed, and for all of us, never drive impaired. Okay. Advisory Working Group, I talk about this every month. I'm not really going to talk about it much today, because we didn't have a May meeting. We are going to have a June meeting, but it is going to be virtual. We're at that point where we're, where we sort of know where the Advisory Working Group is going, what they're leaning into. And now we have to start doing the work to make sure how it will be implemented, what challenges we may have with the current NRS, right? So they have to do a little more digging on that. So the June meeting will be a virtual meeting. Overall, steady remains on schedule with a delivery later this year. And then we're looking forward, and looking forward to see what the legislature is going to do. I know I'm the one that's reporting on it, but it is truly an independent working group. It is twenty-nine members of our community that are looking at the challenges faced and funding our infrastructure, and are tasked with making recommendations to the legislature for ultimate legislator action. So we're looking forward to seeing what those final recommendations are, and then working with the legislature to hopefully find a way to ensure that we can continue building all the great new infrastructure that's needed across our community. Five-Fifteen Viaduct. Whew. So a couple closures happened last week. So last week, we had overnight closures of the Five-Fifteen to wreck some new overhead signs. And we had a one-day total closure of southbound I-515 near downtown from early morning Sunday to early morning Monday. This work was necessary to ensure that the new four-lane configuration and to make way for the start of the paving operations. Positive note, because, I mean, the closures are just, if you get stuck around one of those, it's tough, right? But this is helping us to get the project done faster. So the eastern off-ramp from southbound Five-Fifteen reopened on May twelfth, over a week ahead of schedule. So that was good. And the viaduct is currently, the project is currently ahead of schedule. It was supposed to be completed by the end of the year, and it's looking like we might actually beat that by not just a couple weeks, but maybe a couple months. So super excited to see that the project is not just on schedule, but hopefully much ahead of schedule. And then I-15 Tropicana. We're continuing to work with our major stakeholders as we finalize the timelines for the first phase of construction. Phase one work is planned to take place late summer of this year through early 2023. In fact, we're working right now on scheduling the groundbreaking. Work scope for phase one will include the construction of the Harmon Channel Concrete Drainage Box Culvert to accommodate future widening of I-15 and drainage and utility work. So we're not widening I-15, but we're making sure to put the infrastructure in for that future widening at the time of that project. Lane restrictions during this first phase will include temporary traffic control setups on Dean Martin north of Tropicana and on Tropicana between Dean Martin and Polaris. And again, this is later this summer. We'll have more updates as it gets closer. We're also, as part of the phase one work, going to be installing twelve new ATM Active Traffic Management signs as part of this phase. Ten of those signs will be between Warm Springs and Tropicana. So we're extending the signs further south. We know that the congestion actually starts further south. So we're extending the signs further south to help better manage the network. The signs will also be, the reason why they're part of phase one is they're going to help with traffic control and help provide early warnings for the drivers during the later phases. Installation will require some twenty-four-seven lane restrictions on I-15 in July. So we'll be putting out those notifications like we typically do. And during that time, when HOV lanes are available, they'll be opened as general-purpose lanes for all travelers. So again, this is intended to help ease the pain of the construction of the project. Project construction will start later this summer, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Swallow. Are there questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, over the weekend, the Las Vegas Review Journal wrote an editorial about our HOV lanes in Southern Nevada, and they actually did a pretty good job. They wrote how time has come to free the HOV lanes. All taxpayers have paid for these HOVs lanes, so they should be opened. They talk about in the article, I got it right here if anybody wants to look at it. They talk about how it's not changing anybody's behavior. People are not doubling up or tripling up in order to drive the HOV lanes. It's mostly driven by people that are already doubled up, like landscapers or truck drivers. And it's actually causing people to violate the law. Because if you look at the HOV lanes, probably eighty percent of them are single drivers because they just want to get somewhere. They cite a study in here about how it actually reduces vehicle miles traveled, causes more, actually causes more trouble with air quality. And obviously, they don't like the HOV lanes. You all know I don't like the HOV lanes. But at the end of the article, it reminded me, I kind of forgot about this, is that NDOT was doing a three-year study. Talks about, amid public criticism in 2019, insisted it would take three years to conduct a formal review and comprehensive assessment of HOV operations after collecting, collating, and analyzing three years of data. I kind of forgot about this, but apparently, there's three years' worth of data that's being studied since 2009. So I think it's time to hold a public hearing on what this data says, what the study says, what should be done with HOV lanes. And I'm hoping at the next RTC meeting, we can do this and let the public know what the study says so we can start making decisions about HOV lanes. So don't need to have a discussion today, but I don't know where the study is. Don't have to answer today, but I'm hoping that the study's done, since it's been three years, and we can start talking about whether or not we need to keep HOV lanes or hopefully, and I think the data is going to show, that we need to eliminate these HOV lanes because they're, as far as I'm concerned, they're nonsense. They need to be opened up for everybody to drive, especially when traffic is backed up and people in single cars are having to make a decision. All right, I'm going to violate the law. I'm getting in the HOV lane, because I got to get home and take care of my kids. And actually, in the city of Las Vegas, we dismiss all the HOV violations that come before municipal court. So I want to put that on the table, and I'll let you all
Director Swallow?
Discuss what you want to do at this point. And hopefully, we can have something at the next meeting so we can have a logical discussion about HOV lanes. Thank you.
Thank you. So I did just want to respond real quickly and say yes. In 2019, before the pandemic, we committed to a three-year timeline. Now, I'm just going to note that data, collecting data during the pandemic a little more challenging, because driving behaviors were different. That said, we were on schedule to deliver the study actually a little bit later this year, end of the year, and roll out, depending on the outcome of the study, some pilot hours. We've, I've tasked the committee to complete the study sooner than what their original schedule, I shouldn't say, their pandemic revised schedule was going to be, end of the year. I've tasked them with doing it sooner than that. I'm hoping that by the end of the summer, we'll have some recommendations on what the pilot, the revised pilot hours might be. Pilot hours might remain the same. I mean, there may not be a difference. But I'm hoping the outcome of the study will recommend some reduced hour of operations on the network. It's going to be data-driven. That's why I can't tell you what it's going to be. Once we have the recommendations on what revised hours could be, we will then have to roll out the infrastructure to put out the new signage to reflect that. And then on a three-month rolling basis after that, we're going to be looking at the data to make sure that we're still maintaining a safe system operations. And Councilman, I certainly hear you about the other concerns, because obviously, I think you can hear that pilot hours are likely, it still means that they're going to be in operation. We were required by a lawsuit, actually, in the nineties to have an HOV system. It was, and so we have it. I don't, I don't think we can roll it back completely, but we can certainly look at the hours of operation on the system. And I will have that report completed with recommendations later this year. And then, but I can provide more next month. I just think it might be a little bit premature.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're probably right. But I, is there any way you can provide some kind of preliminary numbers in the next meeting or the meeting after, just so we have an idea of what this study is? I don't even know who's doing the study. Is it a private company?
Yeah, we have a consultant doing it. I don't know that I can have, that I'll have the preliminary data, because really, what they're looking at is what are the hours of operation? So when, when are the volumes such that opening it up would, there's capacity in all of the lanes? And I hear you on your concern that you would want, you would like me to open them up when the lanes are full. Unfortunately, that's exactly the time that we're required to have the HOV lanes in per the lawsuit. So I will see if I can provide any information sooner and potentially next month. But the study is scheduled to be completed later with recommendations later this summer.
Maybe, I understand that. Maybe the, maybe the consultant who was doing the study can come to our RTC meeting and maybe describe the methodology, what they're doing, how they're doing the study, what kind of data they're collecting. So I understand that. They don't have to, maybe they don't have to tell us. And obviously, the rest of the board want, if they want to do it. But maybe they can just give us the methodology behind their study so I have an idea of what kind of data they're gathering in order to, and what eventually they're going to provide us, what information? Not the actual information, but what types of information they're going to be providing us. I don't even know what that is.
Yeah, I'll work with MJ and Chair March to figure out if it's a separate agenda item with our consultant or if it's something that I can provide that necessary detail as part of my Director's Report.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if it needs to be an agenda item, I'd be happy to sponsor that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else to comment? I had a couple of questions. On the Advisory Working Group, are you going to, after they issue their report, will you come back to this board just to give us an update as to what they're recommending to the legislature?
Yeah. I'm going to keep providing recommendations along the way. So certainly, and MJ's a member of the Advisory Working Group as well. So whether it's me providing it, you know, here, it might be that we actually have the consultant do it, because I think that we've gotten a little crosswise that it's the NDOT's effort, and it's actually, we have a consultant we had to hire because we were charged with pulling this together. But it is an independent advisory working group. So whether it's the consultant or me, or MJ, and maybe in briefings for even more detail, happy to provide that information. Because ultimately, if we want to be able to continue to grow and thrive the way our communities have, we've got to figure this out. And it's going to take, it's going to be all hands on deck to get us over the finish line, similar to the efforts that we're talking about with the urban transit funding. So, yeah.
And then looking at the traffic safety information, obviously, it's disturbing to see the numbers in Clark County going up. And I think that's something we need to really be focused on. I know what we're working on right now with the design of the Boulder Highway I think has the potential to show a different way of doing business, which would be separated bike lanes as well as roadways. So I think that that's something that we need to monitor closely and see what kind of changes we can see. And Boulder Highway actually, for a long time, was leading in road deaths in Southern Nevada. I don't know if it still is or not, but it's definitely something that we need to be monitoring and watching. We need to solve that problem clearly, Clark County. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item.
Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you, Director Swallow.
The next item is to approve your consent agenda, which consists of items five through thirty and can be taken one motion. And your agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
If there's no questions or comments, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, number five through number thirty? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Rowan, aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. And that motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item is item thirty-one. This is to approve the issuance of Request for Proposals, number two-two-dash-zero-five-nine. It's our Fixed Route RFP, the process that we would like to use as we go out for this RFP. And I'm going to have Deputy CEO Frances Julian go over that process with you, look for your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you, MJ. Good morning, members of the board. Frances Julian, for the record. I'm here today to provide you with a report regarding the procurement considerations for solicitations of the Transit Service Operations Maintenance Contract. Currently, both Kylis Transit America and MV Transportation administers our service. Both contracts expire July sixth, 2023. Will spend the next several months undergoing the RFP process. This RFP will combine both current contracts under one. The reasoning to bring the two contracts under one umbrella includes the following: enhanced scheduling efficiencies, consistent training, cost savings due to economies of scale, flexibility in the usage of asset, streamlining IT process, and attracting the best talent pool of managers due to the size and scope of this contract. Before issuing this RFP, we shared our draft RFP with private sector transportation companies to allow them to weigh in on our scope of work. This is an industry best practice that we did with the fixed route contract ten years ago and with our latest paratransit contract. In doing so, we're getting feedback on the contract and scope of work. Six transportation companies participated in the process and submitted nearly two-hundred questions, recommendation, or general statement. RTC staff found many of these questions and recommendations valuable, notably, recommendation regarding the requirement to name only the general manager during the RFP process and have the key personnel in place at the commencement of the contract. Questions were asked about the near-term plans to integrate both our electric and hydrogen fuel cell buses, specifically in regard to the maintenance and responsibility and requirements, clarification on use of technology and ownership, and numerous questions for detailed supplemental data to assist with the proposers costing. Next, next in the solicitation process, sorry, I was having trouble with my clicker. Next in the solicitation process includes a two-step evaluation process used in previous Next in the solicitation process includes a two-step evaluation process used in previous fixed route and paratransit solicitations that have proven to be a very effective procurement approach, and is practiced widely utilized in the public transit industry. The step one evaluates the proposers on technical qualifications only, and, and only the, the most qualified proposers advance to the second step of the evaluation process. In order for a proposer to qualify for the step two, an overall, an overall score of acceptable is required. Step two evaluates technical elements and the price. So in the step one of the solicitation process, we'll evaluate proposals based on the following criteria: the management structure and key personnel, experience and reference, corporate support and financials, transition and startup plan, staffing and personnel, field supervision, dispatch and operation management plan, employee training, vehicle and equipment maintenance, safety, security, and emergency management. Our agenda item recommends a 70% price and 30% technical split, but staff actually recommends a 60% price and 40% technical. In the previous transit RFP, when we split the contract into distinct contract, the, the step two evaluation criteria was 70% price and 30% on technical. However, it's our recommendation, given the, the experience required, to manage one large contract, that more technical evaluation weight be considered. We are, for those reasons, recommending a 60% price and 40, 40 technical split. And this, and this step of the, the process will evaluate the technical proposers on the following area: innovation solutions and community partner proposal, workforce recruitment and retention plan, service delivery plan, and interview with an operational tabletop exercise included. The evaluation team will be a combination of RTC staff and external stakeholders. Today, we're asking for your approval for the evaluation criteria of the step one and step two, and the four-year contract terms with no option. We do recommend a shorter term contract for a couple of reasons: the current uncertainties with the CPI and PPI and the associated risk under a long contract term, and the term of this contract would align, would align with our efforts to secure new funding, source of funding. Depending on the result, the results of our funding efforts, the scope of services would warrant a new contract negotiation. And following board approval of the proposed procurement consideration, today we'll issue the RFP on June 7 of 2022. An item will be brought to the RTC board for contract award in December 2022. Undergo a transition period and issue a notice to proceed between March 3, 2023 through June 30, 2023, and the contract will commence on July 1, 2023. The silent period begins on June 7 and ends on December 8 upon award of the contract. During this time, lobbyists and potential proposers should not be contacting staff or the, the RTC or its governing board regarding this RFP. All questions should be deferred to the RTC procurement office. This concludes my presentation and be more than happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners?
I'm sorry, and thank you for that. What is the timeline again as to when those who are bidding on the contract should not be contacted?
So it's from June 7 next month to December 8, 2022 of this year. Yes.
Any other questions, comments? So what we'll need is a motion that speaks to the 40-60, the 40 technical, 60 price. So if we could have a motion to approve the issuance of the RFP for Transit Services and Maintenance with the changed evaluation criteria of 40% technical, 60% price, four-year timeline on the contract. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aron, aye.
Bridges, aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay, and that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item, 35, there are no legal items to discuss, so we can move on to the final agenda, item 36, which is to conduct your last citizen's participation period.
Thank you. This is the time for the final public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak to the board now is your opportunity to come forward, to provide your name and to make your comments for the record. I do have Dennis Hennessy, who wishes to speak.
Happy birthday, MJ. Mayor Goodman, Mayor March, I don't know if you remember me, I was here when Commissioner Brown was the chairperson. I was here for two straight years. Very passionate about a lot of things in my life. I come before you again because I'm very passionate about what's going on now in our transit system, and that's the lack of safety and security. Whether you're all aware of it, I have no idea. I can tell you that the group that sits up here and sits over here from your two contractors, they don't care. Marksmen, your contractor, they don't seem to care, and I say they don't care based on results. So I'm here to talk for a few minutes about safety and security. We're all aware of recent events. Look what happened in New York. I don't know what news channel you all listen to, but every single one of them said that the problems they have, they're having in New York started with fare evasion. That's where it started. And because there were no consequences then, now you got a guy that got on a subway with a gun and killed people. Guess what, guys? We're here now. We're in that situation now. I was going to get up a month ago and speak to you. A wise man asked me to wait. I did wait. And what happened eight hours after your meeting last week? Are you all aware of what happened on Maryland Parkway? There was a fight on a bus. It spilled off the bus. One of the pastors that was in the fight stabbed the other guy 13 times and killed him. We had no marksmen people there. An in-and-out guy detained the guy. I don't know the amount of money you're paying marksmen, but you're wasting your money. They get on our buses two at a time, and they sit. To me, it appears as if they're playing video games. There's no marksmen presence down at Fremont Street, which we've now taken the strip and made Fremont Street the layover point. A marksman guy told one of our drivers the other day, when he asked, where's the guard? That, I did the strip for nine and a half years. We had a guard down there from 7:00 PM till 3:00 AM, seven days a week. You know what the guard said? Oh, it's too dangerous for us down here. He's armed, but yet we've got unarmed male and female drivers driving into that stop every eight minutes. We get no security. And I can give you a little homework assignment for you guys up there. Research Jimmy. Research Jimmy and see what he's getting away with on our RTC buses. For you guys, everybody here knows it, but again, nobody cares. You guys have an obligation, when I say you guys, the RTC has an obligation, to provide safe transportation for your passengers. You can choose to take that obligation, or you can choose not to. You have a responsibility by law to provide a safe working environment for me and my coworkers. For that, you have failed. I'd like a safety agenda item to be on every meeting, every month, instead of just a consent item. It needs to be talked about, it needs to be communicated. That's where we're lacking. And again, if communication happens, maybe they'll start caring, they'll start caring, and the marksmen folks will start caring. Thank you very much. Happy birthday.
Thank you, Dennis. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close public comment at this time, and this meeting is adjourned.